We do, we do. So, just again, by way of recap, as we had a conversation with our community as a whole, with our students who were regularly in front of the board, one of the things that became apparent was our need to better understand where the district is at right now, from a climate impact standpoint, and then use that information to determine next steps for us as a district collectively and with all of our multiple campuses making improvements. So, we went out to seek external assistance with that. We're fortunate, we've had the opportunity to work with the University of Northern Iowa in the past, for those of you who don't know, they have helped us out with our integrated pest management process, and so we had some experience with them. I had the opportunity to reach out, had the opportunity to talk to Eric, who's busy getting the technology set, so I'm not going to bother him while he's up there doing that. By the way, I'll tell you that Eric comes to you with a perspective as a fellow former board member, so.
I'm watching a different school board.
Yeah. And so, reached out to him through the work that he does up at U and I, seemed to be a very good fit for us, just as an FYI. They tend to work normally with municipalities and not school districts. So, after some lengthy conversation with him, he decided that this was a good fit for the work that they did, and with some slight modification, they could look at the municipal work that they did in the context of a school district. So, we started that dialogue with them in the fall. They've been working with our team to gather information, to better understand where we're at. One of the things that you're going to hear today is that they started with last year's information, but one of the things that we would like to consider as we move forward is to try to go backwards in time, because we believe that we've actually made quite a bit of improvement over the last five to seven years, as we started our facility master plan. We'd like to be able to document that, just so we can see the progress that we have made, but we also recognize that that will take time to do, and so, we're starting right now with what we do know about our data from the last year, and then we're able to, from that information, take a look at what next steps will be for the district. They'll be able to share with you where our greatest impact is from a carbon footprint standpoint, and then we can start to discuss logical next steps that we have to take as a district. So, with that, I'm not going to steal any more of your thunder, Eric, and I'm going to turn it over to you when you are ready to roll.
Sorry for the delay, and thank you for the show. Appreciate it. Yeah. Okay, it's great to be with you all tonight. Appreciate the introduction and the opportunity to work with you all. Steve gave a great intro there about what we've been up to and how we got to this point. I just want to start off by commending you for even, you know, looking at this as a school district. It's, it's an important thing, obviously, and what we're trying to do is take a very database analytical approach to this, to look at where greenhouse gas emissions come from that are associated with your facilities and operations, and then help you make, make some database, very informed decisions about where to move forward with trying to take action to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, with that, I thought I'd just describe really briefly that program, what the program is, and how we do it. We are members of an organization called, referred to as ICLI, which is the International Council for Local Environmental Initiatives. We have what's called a regional affiliate membership in that, which, which basically allows us to provide services through ICLI to any local government jurisdiction in the state that's interested in working with us on climate action planning. Climate action planning, again, is essentially first determining what your carbon footprint is, and then trying to help, you know, come up with some strategies to, to reduce carbon emissions. So, the, providing those services to typically local governments, I mean, you actually are a local government, but you're not a city government, we are, in a way, kind of modifying this and doing an innovative thing with applying this program to a school district, and I'm really excited about that. I hope we can replicate this with other school districts, so thank you for this opportunity. That service provision is one part of this, the other part is giving great experience to our U and I students in working on this. So, I've got Rebecca Averly with us here tonight, she's a public administration major in our political science department. She's been working on this project for you over the course of this fall semester, and she's going to do a little piece of the presentation tonight. So, we call that student engagement, U and I Conservation Corps. Rebecca's a student intern. We also work this into class projects occasionally, so I just wanted you to kind of be familiar with our program. The way, just really quickly, the way climate action planning works is kind of a four-step process, I've said it earlier. First thing is to develop a greenhouse gas emissions inventory. So, in your case, we're doing this for your operational footprint yourself, you know, this program can be applied on a community scale, so that will include all sectors of a community, private sector included. We're doing it just for your footprint. So, building and facilities, energy use data goes into that. Transportation fuel use is another data point, water use, and then wastewater is the other end of that. When you use water, it turns into wastewater, and then solid waste generation. Those are the primary activities in your operation that result in greenhouse gas emissions. So, those are the things we need to identify and then figure out what to do something with. So, the emissions inventory is the baseline. Then we want to do a business as usual forecast. Business as usual forecast is essentially what's going to happen to emissions out into the future if you don't change any of your practices. So, just looking out in the future that way, we put in some, some data points on growth factors, and we'll talk about those in a minute, just to kind of help us figure out where you might be out in the future. Then, the fun part is the planning. You need to set a goal for emissions reductions. That's the first step in the planning process. Then, you've got to come up with some strategies to try to figure out how you can get to those goals. You're probably familiar, I'm sure, that City of Iowa City has adopted a climate action plan, and they have set ambitious greenhouse gas emissions reduction goals. So, when we did this analysis, we used those goals for you. We've just put those goals into what we were doing. They actually updated their goals just in the last year, since the first set of goals were adopted. These are the more recent goals, 45% below 2010 levels by the year 2030, and then the second, and obviously more ambitious, goal is 100% below those 2010 levels by the year 2050. So, net zero by the year 2050. We've got to come up with some strategies to get there, and then the long-term thing is to monitor, which you go back and do, future inventories the same way that you did that initial inventory, and kind of measure your progress. That's what the whole program is about. So, now we'll skip over, and I don't know if you, do you have this?
Need it, I uploaded it for you.
Okay, good. So, Rebecca's going to talk briefly about the, yeah, the emissions inventory.
Yep, as Eric mentioned about the inventory, our first step was to take all of the, it's composed of buildings and facilities, which is electricity and gas usage, solid waste, your bus fleet, gasoline vehicles, and then water usage. So, all of that was taken from all of the whole school district and broken down into metric tons or the carbon emissions, and that's like through this little pie graph here. As you can see, like, the big focus is buildings and facilities, which is the big yellow portion of our pie graph there. And then, the little portion of it is then broken down into the chart on the right, and then you can see that the bus fleet is also a big portion of what we are looking at. So, those are the two main areas that we need to focus on, is the gasoline and electricity usage and the bus fleet. So, that takes up about 90% of the total emissions, is the buildings and facilities. And then, they go down. This is the business as usual, if you want to pull it back or something.
We could do that.
Yeah. This is the business as usual, and like Eric mentioned as well, it's just as, if you were just to keep doing what you're doing right now, this is where, what the graph would look like. And the main two points of this would be the, we had to calculate for the enrollment growth, so obviously, throughout years, students come to schools, and your growth is just going to keep continuing. So, we need to calculate that, and then also, a big thing of why it decreases so much would be the decarbonization of electricity. So, your main electricity providers are Mid-American and Alliant, and they came out with big goals about how they're planning on reducing their carbon, their carbon usage. So, for example, Mid-American is planning on reduce their emissions to provide 100% renewable energy to their customers by 2021. And then, the Alliant also came out with a goal to reduce fossil fuel generation from 74% in 2018 to 67% in 2024. So, that would be our big of why it decreases so much. So, even right now, your business as usual is that blue line, and the first goal that we brought up, or that the district is planning on accomplishing would be the 45% below our 2018 goal by 2030. And that green dashed line is, would be that goal, and as you can see, you're already planning on hitting that goal, just with that, just with those reduction strategies from the electricity companies.
Maybe we'll pause there and see. So, that's the, the baseline emissions inventory, that's shown here in this timeline. So, you've got three different components, solid waste, water and wastewater, and your gasoline vehicle fleet, this is gasoline vehicles, so small trucks.
Hey, those district vehicles with the apple on the side.
Yeah. All of that is in, you know, is here, and then, this is your building energy use, which is electricity and natural gas use, and then the green is your bus fleet, essentially. So, so this is the baseline inventory, and as Rebecca said, we factored in for the business as usual going forward, the decarbonization of the electricity grid using the goals that Mid-American and Alliant have publicly stated. Mid-American's is the most ambitious by far, Alliant does have a small goal set, but most of your electricity comes from Mid-American, somewhere around 85% of your electricity as a district. You do, in addition to Mid-American and Alliant, you also get electricity from Lynn County REC for some of your schools, Rural Electric Co-op, that is, and they don't have any stated goals for decarbonization of their electricity. So, we couldn't use, couldn't use that in going forward. So, most of what you see here is due to, to those decarbonization goals. And then, we'll point out that we, just repeating this to make sure it's clear, but we used student enrollment growth factors in the solid waste and water. We figured, you know, you add students, they're going to generate more solid waste, they're going to use more water, but adding students isn't necessarily going to add more buildings, so therefore not necessarily more building energy use on a, on a linear basis. It's, it's going to be big steps, you know, when you add another school, that kind of thing. So, we just held building energy use flat, looking out into the future.
Why does vehicle fleet drop?
It actually, in this graph, it doesn't, it's kind of a, yeah, it doesn't, you can't see it very well. This size of this, it's the same as that size there. It's just because it's headed downhill, it looks, looks weird, but yeah.
It's the buildings and facilities that's dropping, because of some of the geothermal.
Right. Geothermal and.
Yeah, all of this is in that.
And the energy that we buy, the electricity that we buy. So, we're using less natural gas, we're using more electricity, and that electricity, at least from Mid-American, will come from more renewable sources.
So, are there questions about that? Because there is one more step I want to show you that the way we had to do. Okay, so, this was the baseline in 2018, but you've been on the path of doing a whole bunch of geothermal conversions. So, since 2004, we've been told you've been converting as many buildings as you can from natural gas heat to geothermal, and that's, so over those 15 years, you've made great strides in that regard. The baseline year we used, we used was 2018, and that was mostly due to accessibility of records, of bills. You've got a new bill keep tracking system now. It was going to be really onerous to go back and get 2010 data. Steve mentioned that earlier, maybe we could, you know, at some future time, go back and get 2010 data. But, because this is a snapshot in time right here, you actually had some of those geothermal conversions that are still occurring after 2018. They're actually happening right now, that aren't captured right here. So, just the way this program works and using this thing, we had to model those as future strategies after 2018. They're already in the works. Another thing is you added a school building, and you have plans to decommission a school building, right? So, we, that's old Hoover, right, which was what we put in there. So, those, old Hoover bills are included in this, but that, that building will be taken offline. So, what we had to do was put in, put in some strategies. So, you've got new school, Grand Elementary, you've got geothermal conversions that would be complete in 2020, that's natural gas reduction and electricity increase, same thing for 2021, and then school decommissioning at Hoover will change natural gas and electricity. So, when those things are complete, what happens is this. So, again, like, we just couldn't, we had to do it this way, because those changes weren't yet completed in 2018. So, this blue line is still your business as usual from 2018, but the things that you've got going already are going to take, you know, further nosedive. So, you can count on this really being your business as usual.
Sorry, that's touch wood.
Oh, I'm touching the screen.
So, we need to set more aggressive targets then?
Well, well, we really, that's one of the reasons I said we want to go backwards. Now, what we have to do is, on the other side, on the other side of the wall here is the, is our old secure file storage room, and we literally will have to go through boxes, but we think, given about six months, we can go back about seven years.
No.
Is that right?
Only five.
Five years, sorry, five years. I keep wanting to go more, and they keep telling me less. So, we can get about five years worth of data, so we think we can get back to about 2012, 13, by digging through there. I just added another year. I know, just keep doing that, you know, you'll eventually get far enough back, you dig through enough records. But, I think what we're going to see is, is we're going to see that that, that line actually stays on that exponential curve, because we had so much introduction of energy savings through that geothermal conversion through our facility master plan, that really hit its stride in 2013. So, from an aggressive standpoint, Janet.
Everyone laughed at me, didn't they?
It's all right, I heard you.
I don't know if you get more aggressive than 100% reduction.
She's talking about pace.
Yeah.
Yes. So, one of the things, and Eric is going to do this, show you in a minute here, so we know that there are two major areas of focus. I don't want to discount the other ones, because as, as Eric and I talked about this, the other components, so we've had a lot of people talk to us, people that were at DPO, heard the conversation about.
It's in our results.
Silverware and things like that. So, those are all important social components of this. So, those, those bear a level of social responsibility, and, and we don't want to lose sight of those, and that will still be part of the work that we do. But, when you talk about real return on investment for reducing and then eventually eliminating the carbon footprint, it leaves, lives in these two areas. So, when we talked about it, our focus was, where are 97% of our costs associated? Yellow, green. So, we're going to focus on that, and those are the areas where we can get aggressive. We talked about, by the way, I should tell you, I didn't tell you before, I said what he used to do was be a school board member. He's not a school board member anymore, because now he's a state legislator. And so, we talked about what kind of legislative advocacy and pressure we can put on, whether it's Lynn County REC, or whether it's Alliant Energy to increase their capacity, because we will always have to buy electricity from someone, and he's going to talk to you a little bit about what solar could look like and what the cost would be for us. But, the reality is, with the amount of electricity that we consume, we're always going to have to buy from someone else, and so, that someone else needs to be socially responsible. We have an opportunity, I think, from a legislative standpoint, from a lobbying standpoint, to put a lot of pressure on those from whom we buy the power, and hopefully collectively to start working with other school districts and our other municipalities, to put that same kind of pressure on them, because in the end, we all have to buy a majority of our power from someone else. Now, then, the green line, which he's going to talk about, is transportation. We own that. We own that, and that's going to require us to take a real hard look at what we do, because we won't get to zero unless we do something with the green line. The yellow line, we can work on that, from a legislative standpoint, a lobbying standpoint, the green line, we are going to own that, and he'll kind of walk through that. But, you know, as he said, those other pieces are there, but much of that lies in a social responsibility mode, as opposed to the carbon footprint mode, and we just need to make sure we differentiate between those two.
So, Steve, are you really sure that the district cannot generate electricity that the district?
I'm going to let him show you what he found from that.
Charlie?
Yeah. So, just, yeah, just want to make sure everybody, so, really, this, you know, where, the top of this green line is kind of your business as usual line now. That's, that's where you're, you're headed right now. So, that first goal of the cities in 2030 to reduce by 45%, you've already exceeded that without doing anything, and quite a bit below that. In fact, I, my calculation was that you will be 62% below the 2018 baseline level, so this, this level from here to here, 62% reduction, and the goal was 45% without doing anything. So, you're, you know, you're headed in the right direction.
Sorry, real quick, because I think, I think it's important, it goes to the point, is the not do anything, I think, doesn't describe what's going on, right?
Oh, I'm.
And I know, Eric, I know you're not saying that, but, right, right, but that's, I think that's a big part of what, of what Steve is saying, right?
Right.
Is that this is all built upon this idea of all the changes that we've made over the last 10 years. And so, I don't want the narrative to go out there that we just have happened in this position where we don't need to do anything. It's been a tremendous amount of work that, you know, Dwayne and Jeff and Ben and Steve Backer's team have got us on this trajectory to put us, to put us ahead of the curve. So.
That part is mainly geothermal.
Geothermal, looking at that, and looking at some other pieces.
Another, other.
Lighting, yeah.
Everything in your facilities master plan that has to do with building envelope.
Yep, windows, roofs.
LED lighting, you know, all of that. Geothermal is the biggest.
Water that we've done.
Well, my question, then, when you say don't do anything, I'm assuming that we have some of these planned out that we haven't implemented, that have been approved. Do we still need to follow through with that in order to be at the do nothing?
So, there are, and there are a couple more buildings where we can put in geothermal. Because of the footprint of some of our campuses, right now, we do have a couple, we will not be able to do that, but yes, there are more buildings that will come along.
But, I guess, my question is, if we start mucking with the plans that are in place now, can we actually go the opposite way? I mean, would we have a bad effect?
Yeah.
Like, we need to stay the course with what we have in place and not change that?
We're probably okay right now, because we're closing in on Facility Master Plan 1.0, because with some of the actions you took today, we're closing that out. Now, when we start talking about FMP 2.0, that's going to be key, because one of the things, we talked about this, so Hills is one of those that eats up a big chunk of that in there, in a sense, because there's no geothermal down there, it's an old building, poor lighting, bad building envelope, roofing needs work on it. So, when you start, if you will, kind of, if you were to thermal image the district and look at where the hotspots are, you're going to find a school like, like Hills to be one of those hotspots. Now, keep in mind, we're doing a lot of work at City High right now, we're doing work at, at West High right now. So, as you see, the big geothermal field at West High come online, you see some of that work at City High come online, the relamping, the HVAC work that's being done there. Because they are big buildings, we're going to see, that's where we get this, this downward trajectory here, because we're really addressing some of our large schools, right? So, you start to see that southeast, northwest, and so, you start to see this in here. So, with the work that we've already done, most of that's already been passed, and moving forward, there's a few projects that still have to be passed, but most of that work, as we wrap up FMP 1.0, is what's going to be in here. We have a lot of opportunity in front of us when we start doing FMP 2.0.
Yeah, sorry, Chase. And business as usual for you guys means finishing out very ambitious projects that you've been on, you've been doing for 15 years. That's, yeah.
I, I know you mean that. I think it's just more of a, we need to celebrate those successes, I think, because we are moving the.
Which is why I'm going to make him dig through the files in the back and find me a few more of your records. So, just keep reminding of that.
I don't want to keep you here all night, stop it, Joe. So, so what we did was, and I, you know, I tried to kind of summarize this in, you know, in the, the handout, the four-page thing, the summary that we gave you. But, as Steve said, there are a few things you could do. So, your bus fleet, that green piece, you know, is totally up to you. And really, the only thing that can be done about removing or getting rid of, eliminating emissions on that is convert to electrical, electric buses, and then rely on green electricity for powering those buses. That's the only way to, to totally get rid of emissions. Do you have a different?
No, no, I'm just a big price tag.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
That's what we're laughing.
Okay, so she's going to put that in, just to show you, the way this works, we had to model one of these for every year. What we did, just to, just to try to show it, we did an 11-year time span, so assuming you wouldn't completely convert your buses overnight, we just chose 11 years, because that would get us to 2030. That means, you know, you have 82 buses right now, you could divide that by 11, so that would reduce your footprint down for that green out in 2030, down to essentially nothing. There's still some emissions because your electricity isn't green, isn't 100% green, so that means that we can't show complete reduction, but.
The good news with that is, I thought about this after he and I talked, is that would depend on the bus barn location. Because if we've got Alliant and Lynn County REC being less aggressive than Mid-American, then it becomes a question of where do you put the bus barn, and, and how do you take advantage of the greenest electricity that we have access to? So, being a multi-municipality district, we've got some opportunities that I didn't think about last year.
Does the busing contractor have electric buses?
So, we've, we've had those conversations a little bit, and they didn't, they didn't go very well early on. We're talking, and it is a cost expense. If you look at the research, a diesel bus costs about $110,000, and electric one costs $200, $230,000 upfront. So, it's upfront costs, not the cost of the bus, it's as you look at the actual bus barn, what does the electric grid look like in terms of, you know, making sure you get the, the buses powered up.
Yep.
Eric Smart to not put the, completely to dissolve that line, because, you know, there's still questions about the range of some of the buses, and not necessarily for our routes, but if we went on field trips, and so.
Maybe eventually, we have some part of the fleet is electric, we're more early and not further.
Exactly.
Right.
That's exactly what we discussed. We also talked about, remember, I said, all the, the vehicles that have the, the Apple logo on the side, right? So, what can we do to convert our small fleet that we have? There might be some things, I don't know if you can buy an electric dump truck. I don't know if you can buy an electric garbage truck. I don't know if those are out there.
Biodiesel.
And that's a possibility too, because that would still help us decrease that. So, I think.
I mean, is there, is there, because we have diesel already, and, and the conversion on that, I, I don't know, is it fairly inexpensive? It's probably not $100,000.
Well, and I gave kind of like the rough numbers upfront. I mean, there are things, and Eric, using 11 years is good, because some of the research shows that the buses have normally a 15 to 16-year lifespan, but they'll more than pay for themselves in 13 years and actually generate a long-term cost savings in addition to an energy savings. And so, it's an upfront investment for a long-range payoff, but it's just how you kind of do it at the beginning, as you phase it in. So, there is a price tag, but again, it does show in the long run, in some of the early tests, that you can make that, that money back. There's also compressed natural gas, there's, there's all sorts of.
And one thing to keep in mind, right, we didn't convert every building in the district to, to geothermal overnight.
Right.
10-year plan, right? So, what's our 10-year plan when we look at our purchased bus fleet, when we look at our small vehicle fleet? I think if we do that, which is what he did in his modeling, I think if we do that, and we say to ourselves, okay, if our goal is, then we get there by, and then we say, okay, we can't buy an entire fleet of electric buses next year, can we do some electric purchase? Is it worthwhile to do some biodiesel conversion? Do we look at, you know, do we look at compressed natural gas? I mean, I think we, we then have an opportunity to start developing a strategy laid out over 10 years.
Yeah.
That allows us to get to that point.
Yeah. And so, looking at a big, big yellow line.
Yes. We're getting to that.
So, geothermal buildings still use some natural gas?
Uh, yes. Yours, yours do, if you're using gas for water heating and, and cooking, those are, you know.
Or not for building heat?
Right. Now, you do have some buildings, my understanding is, best I can understand, you have some that were partially converted to geothermal, but the other parts of the building were still natural gas heated. And then, as Chase pointed out earlier, there are some buildings that, due to site conditions, are not possible to do geothermal.
Oh, Hills too.
So, that's, that's a stickier wicked to deal with. If you can't convert to geothermal, then you're stuck on natural gas until you come up with another alternative means to heat those buildings.
Is electric heating not available for buildings to decide?
Yes, but we didn't, we didn't include anything like that in the model. So, anyway, but back to the point, you know, for the electricity piece, which is the majority of this, really, the majority of this that's left is electricity. What, what can be done, you can rely on the utilities to continue to green the electricity grid. Mid-American's goal is already built into this. Really, what's, you know, the majority of this that's left is that fifteen percent of your electricity that comes from Alliant and Lynn County REC. And that either needs to green, or you gotta, as you noted earlier, produce your own electricity. So, that comes with an exorbitant price tag. I just did a quick kinda, you know, back-of-the-envelope number based on two dollars and twenty-five cents a watt installed, installed solar. Came up with, to offset all of your electricity use, you'd need to produce nineteen, or you'd need a nineteen-megawatt solar installation, which is gigantic. At two dollars and twenty-five cents an installed watt, that'd be forty-three million dollars to do that. And the bigger, maybe the bigger thing is that it would take about ninety-five acres of property.
And your price tag doesn't include the land?
That doesn't include the land, that's just a, you know, that's just a back-of-the-envelope number, so please don't write it down, put it in the paper.
And remember, one of the challenges that we have as a district is that we can't just go out and create a solar farm out in the middle of nowhere. So, we can't just go down to the bottom of the district and find how much farmland, it has to be contiguous to our district, or to a district building, and so.
Buy a great big elementary school site?
We, and that, we'd have to do that, buy a great big elementary site, build the elementary school there, and then build the solar farm around it, so.
So, that, that, that yellow's going down.
To show that, that's what, yeah, Rebecca put that in. So, that's what would happen if you put in a solar installation of that size, nineteen megawatt, and you added it in over time. I mean, again, we're assuming you wouldn't do a forty-three-million-dollar project, like, and, you know, you could add it incrementally over time, that's what it would do. And then, this is your natural gas emissions, mostly natural gas that's left there, because we don't have any plan in here to use the natural gas.
So, Hills is still in there, and, and.
So, it, you know, it's, it's getting down there pretty well. Another option, you know, that we looked at, just to kind of, you know, throw different things out there, would be to do a solar installation of half that size, so offset half of your electricity use, so just cut that price tag in half, roughly, the size of property that would be used. And then aggressively somehow, you've already done so much of this, and I don't have the answer for how this could be accomplished, but reduce energy use in your buildings by half the amount that's currently used there. So, massive investments.
Cold in the winter, warmer in the summer, reduce our lamping.
So, yeah, for this one, you know, that actually, the way the model worked, we put that in just kind of overnight, the fifty percent reduction in, in energy use. And so, that's why it shows this dramatic drop, and then the, the solar array that offsets half of your electricity use out into the future. So, you get to a similar point in 2050. So, you've still got that natural gas emissions left, you've got the, the others that we haven't done anything about, we haven't talked about solid waste, you know, water, wastewater, or I didn't put anything, we didn't put anything for your other vehicles, which also could be converted to EVs. That's this stuff here. So, those are just, you know, to show you what the models kinda show with these different scenarios.
Do you need to have one of these large solar farms to really net the benefit of solar? Or is there something to be said with installing a few panels on each school to try to provide specific energy to that?
Yeah, absolutely. Point being, though, I mean, that you've got a certain amount of electricity usage as a district, you've gotta offset that somewhere. Whether it's on rooftops or on, you know, ground installation, it, what we were trying to model was a solar installation that would offset all of your electricity use. And the ninety-five acres, whether that's buildings, you know, top of buildings, or a field somewhere, or whatever, spread out, distributed across the district, still gonna take that much space.
So, maybe just for our new board members, so you know, we've already met with a few different solar providers, we've done our rooftop inventory, so we know how much space we have up there. That's part of actually the City of Iowa City's requirement, if you're gonna install solar on the roof, you have to go through an engineering analysis, so we already had that done. We were able to provide that to a couple of the solar providers that are interested, so they could take a look at it. And then, they were able to assess it from a viability standpoint, because you need to reach a certain size on a roof in order for it to be a viable array. So, they were able to look at it and say, given the roof, given the engineering analysis, given the size of the array, given the orientation, and the solar value that's associated with that particular roof, here might be some viable rooftops where you could install some solar. So, I think that, I, I, in a sense, kinda clustered that in with some of our other social components that we need to do. And, and I think that we really, again, need to focus on, on two baskets of, of activities, if you will. Some of those high-rate of return, large area of, of carbon footprint pieces, which are our busing and our buildings. And then, look at what are our social responsibility factors that go along with it? And, and some of that rooftop solar, or it could be ground-mounted solar, depending on where that's at with our property. I think those two, they live in, in different worlds, accomplish the same goal in the end, but they, they, I think, require from us two different sets of activities.
Well, especially if we target the solar in where we have Alliant Energy and the Lynn County REC, just to help reduce our reliance on them.
And looking at FMP two point oh, and saying, what are the projects that need to be done there? What does the new Hills Elementary School look like? And where's the opportunity to take that and actually make it an efficient building?
And if you have that forty-three million, it sounds like a lot, you know, but, you know, twenty-million-dollar, and if this is something that the community gets behind.
Absolutely.
A twenty-million-dollar bond isn't a crazy thought for, and then if we say, hey.
And then, it actually starts to get to be a more reasonable geographic footprint too, because keep in mind, that's gonna live next to somebody.
Yeah.
And, and so, we are, we are good neighbors, so what does that look like?
Big field, right?
So, I mean, I'd echo everything Steve said about, you know, particularly the solid waste reduction and water conservation projects are extremely important environmental projects. We're not trying to reduce, you know, that at all. But from a climate action standpoint, your highest priority really need to be in building energy use and transportation. If you're, if that's what you're after, is reducing greenhouse gas emissions, that's where your focus needs to be.
Is that the most narrow yellow line you've got?
So, yeah, I did, well, sorry, were you talking about the natural gas, the residential?
Yellow line, that's the smallest it gets.
You wanted to know if that's as far down to close to zero as you've modeled it?
Yes, yeah, that's as far.
It is. The last, the last steps are the toughest ones in here.
Well, just getting to this is tough.
But, but I thought, the other thing we kinda talked about was, you know, that, that's by 2050, and think of all the advances we've made.
That's what I'm just sitting here thinking too, it's like, you don't even know.
How it would be sourced in the last twenty years, so.
This is more than what we know today.
Exactly, today's technology.
And so, we have to do as much as we can to try to shrink it as much as we can, but I think we also need to be optimistic that we're going to find some other ways to, to be better to the, to the earth and to find more renewable resources. And so, this is exciting, but I think we also need to keep an eye out for what else is going to develop.
I mean, if we keep, if we keep moving at the pace that we're moving, and even if you go back to the very first graph, and you look at the, the relatively steep decline that we've been able to attain, I mean, if we can, if we can continue to work that hard, and technology can evolve, and people's disposition towards this kind of work evolves, I mean, I think that there's an opportunity for us to continue to, to push that, that trajectory down.
Yeah, and the, the big thing is that you're, you're having this discussion, and you are planning, you're planning for this. I mean, that's, that's light years ahead of most places, I can tell you. So, can I, just on the building energy efficiency and maybe behavioral change issues and all of that, I don't know if you guys have met, can I introduce our guest?
I was gonna ask you to do that, so that's perfect.
So, well, first, I'll introduce Kamiar Shine, he's the, the director of the Center for Energy and Environmental Education at U and I, so he's, he's my boss. And he came along for the ride, I think Steve mentioned when I was fiddling with the computer that you guys have done projects in the past. So, he, he's, he's collaborated with you before. We have a, an AmeriCorps program called Green Iowa AmeriCorps. And one, one of the new subsections of that program that we've added just in the last couple of years is called Sustainable Schools AmeriCorps. So, we're repairing, you know, placing AmeriCorps members in school districts to do this type of work, and do it in pairs, so that one of them is kind of more focused on buildings and facilities, environmental projects, you know, making, helping, assisting the school districts with, with implementing better practices. The other one's kinda more focused on educational, you know, impact projects, helping teachers design lesson plans and implement different projects in the district. Those aren't clear boundaries, but that's kind of the way this program is set up. So, we have Lisa Stark and Adriana Morales, who are brand-new Green Iowa AmeriCorps Sustainable Schools members, who have been placed with your school district. And the point of having them here, like I said, is to help you think about ways that we can conserve energy, essentially, you know? That's gonna need to be a key component of this moving forward for all of us is behavioral change, you know? And all the small little things that we can do, you know, smart power strips and energy cell appliances wherever we can, and getting used to not being comfortable at seventy degrees all year round in buildings. We're gonna have to be a little bit cooler in the winter and a little bit warmer in the summer. Those kinds of things are gonna need to happen. So, anyway, I just wanted to, to introduce you to them if you didn't know them already, and that's what they're here for, so. I think that's all we got, I know we can't wanna be here all night, so, yeah.
Thank you for coming, and it's been a great conversation.
I just wanna thank you for coming, and also thank you for defeating Walt Rogers, because he's not a friend of the station than you are.
That's great.
I don't think I can comment on that.
It's on the record, I would.
I'm happy to be here, and I appreciate it.
This is really, really, really helpful, thank you so much for this, things like Dana and the dinner models you put together. I mean, it really was very educational for us to see these graphs, and I think, you know, we need to wrestle with adding some concrete targets in our, in our climate action resolution. I mean, we've already hit one of them, and so, we, I think as a board, need to be, do we think we wanna put in it? And maybe we'd say, you know, zero emissions by 2050, in the optimistic vein, that technology's gonna, and we'll change behavior, and, or do we wanna split the difference somehow?
The beautiful part about it is, it's a living document. And so, I think that, I, I think that we, we have an easy opportunity to put some targets in there for Facility Master Plan two point oh that holds you and future boards to expectations about what it's going to look like when you design a new school. What are the things that have to be a part of it? We've talked about, should a new building be designed so that it's engineered for rooftop solar from the start? Passive solar from a, a lighting and a heating standpoint, does it have to have geothermal? That influences us when we're out looking at property, right? Because then we look at a piece of property and say, will it or won't it accommodate geothermal? What's its orientation? What's its solar value? Because all those pieces are out there, we know what they are, but they're not necessarily a part of what we do right now. We're looking for the least expensive parcel of property or things like that. So, those are things that we have to take into consideration, and if they are part of the Climate Action Plan, then they influence the Facility Master Plan two point oh.
We can even add a line in the resolution around that FMP two point oh must take into account.
Absolutely. Transportation, if we wanna talk about what our, our current and future bus fleet looks like, what our current and future small vehicle fleet looks like, what is your goal for that? Do you want to replace one percent, two percent, five percent of your buses on an annual basis? What's your goal? How quickly do you wanna get there? And everything, you know, my expression, right, everything's at what cost? So, then we look at it and we say, if we know what the at-what cost is, then how aggressive can we set our goals? And where are we willing to make trade-offs as we go through there? And I think that's, that's in the end what drives this, this number down.
I'm feeling the pressure now for December thirty-first deadline for adding targets to the resolution, we won't hit that.
We won't, but we're, we're very close.
Is it possible to have some kind of, how would you go about the draft of what that new?
I think we can, we can bring some language to you when you come back on January fourteenth to say, what might this look like?
Okay.
Because again, as you mentioned when we were talking about our, our draft notification that we had on the document that was up on the screen, and when we start talking about at-what-cost pieces, I'm sure we're gonna get feedback from the community on that. And so, some will think we oughta move quicker, some will think we oughta move slower, spend more, spend less. And so, I think there's an opportunity for us to recognize, we're probably gonna wanna allow the community to have some input in that conversation.
So, would you, you can bring a draft?
We can, I mean, we can at least bring a framework, and one of the things we talked about, we're modeling it after some of our annual reports, where we have our benchmarks, and we have the longitudinal data to show where we've been and where we're going. And so, we could add to it, and, you know, I know you're feeling the pressure, but then it also.
Yeah, and we've talked to Eric about coming back, so, he's got the modeling software, we can, and remember, he was able to say, here's where you are, here's where you're going. Well, we do some things, now he can plug that actual data in and say, you've come from here to here, what happens next? So, you know, we've talked about, this isn't a one-shot deal, this is an annual report that comes back to you. Depending on how quickly we're moving on some of these pieces, we may need to provide some quarterly updates for you. We probably wanna work with Eric and his team so they can come back annually and say, this is where you got to from last year to this year, here's where we think you're going from this year to next year.
An annual update could be part of the resolution.
Yeah.
Eric, are you familiar with the City's Climate Action Plan?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Does this compare to it?
Well.
In terms of, just, just in terms of its overall goals?
In terms of its goals, so this, the, the Climate Action Plan for the city is a citywide plan that includes residential, commercial, industrial sectors, you know, not just the footprint of the city government itself. So, you're doing this just for your facilities and operations footprint, which would really be a component of.
We'd be helping them, absolutely.
You, your efforts can be included in their overall goals. So, we, we used, you know, their goals as this and this, the forty-five percent and, and a hundred percent reduction, because you kinda wanna fit into what they're, they're trying to accomplish. Does that answer it?
Yeah, I was wondering, Steve, if the time for, we should maybe put this, of what we're trying to do, planning on doing, to the Climate Action Commission, and see what their response is.
I've, I've talked to Jeff about it, and, and as we get a little bit further down the road here, as the board adopts their goals, we, we've talked about having that opportunity to have that crossover.
So, speaking, so, speaking of that, so we submitted a nominee for the city's commission, but just by the time that we kinda got into the game, we were a little late, so they didn't have an actual seat for us. Ben is our, is our rep, but he's been asked to be on several of the subcommittees as a representative. And they've actually, they're having a conversation about potentially trying to find a better seat for the district right now.
There's been some discussions on that, and then some of the side discussions, and ideas after, going to that first commission is, we wanna make sure that this data will plug straight into theirs.
Right.
And so, however this is being kept as far as, you know, tons of carbon per, per, what am I, I don't know, I can't even categorize that, per populace or whatever, I wanna make sure that all that language is talking and communicating and transferring over there, so, it's very early.
So, and I'd throw out there that we know Brenda Nation's well, she's the city's sustainability coordinator position, so staff person that kinda receives the efforts. And so, you know, the relationship is already there.
So, it's exciting stuff.
I mean, it is exciting, and it is time to be optimistic, and we can't appreciate how much you helped us tonight, and all the work and the presentation, it's super.
Thank you, thank you again for the opportunity, and we're really, like I said, hopeful that, that what we're working on with you can be. that, that what we're working on with you can be replicated with other school districts, um, around the state, so, um, thanks for being leaders in that way. So, thank you, I'll clean up while you move on to your next agenda.
Thanks, all right, students.
Oh my gosh, we went on strike every Friday since March, you know, to push on this, yeah, so that's really good. Um, our next topic is, uh...
Actually, I was, I came in on Friday to do the bills, and a lady had come in, and I was at the front desk asking where the climate is. I was like, well?
Late, you're late.
We did work, and they're happy here now.
They're in class, or they're at the university, one or the other.
That's awesome. Um, so we've done an update on our, um, crisis process.
Yep. And, um, honestly, there's not a bunch of new information here.
Crisis response.
Crisis response, yes. So, I don't have a ton of new information for you since we talked the last time, I did put a little bit of an updated timeline, um, based on some of the feedback from last time, Lisa helped me catch that, I think we're the sixth, um, judicial district there, so that needs to be adjusted, and I'll adjust that after this evening. I put the job responsibilities on there again, but I would say the bulk of what Kate and I've done in the interim is trying to reach out to other districts and get some phone calls set up, she completed one on the fifth of December, uh, with the district to get some information on their plan and their process, uh, what model they're using, and so we're in the process of organizing those, um, as well as a, a P D event here at the end of December, right? The conference?
End of January.
End of January, uh, so we're getting some internal people, uh, to that event that really talks about crisis and threat assessment in general, and then we've been working with those couple, um, I guess providers that could come do presentations for you, Securly and Gaggle, um, which has probably caught the most community attention here recently, around the social media monitoring, um, ability, and so, for us, we would hope, you know, here as we get into January, we'd have some more of that feedback collected, we'd hope to get to about four to six districts, and then try to summarize that, that content for you guys when we would come back, and then schedule those presentations with Securly and Gaggle, which I think we can get them for the fourteenth, is what we checked with, which I know...
So do you have those two up for you?
Yeah, and I probably should've spoke up when you were doing agenda setting, but I didn't wanna get ahead of that, but I do think that would probably be a good work session topic, in a sense that we could have, if you're willing to have both those groups, and maybe we just keep the work session as that, and then...
Get along in the same room?
They will, we'll make them, yeah.
Someone's gonna wait outside in the next week.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, switch around. But we could do that, we could have that presentation, that would give you some time to think about it, then maybe, uh, at a following meeting, we'd have that summary data from the other districts collected, and we could have a couple actionable things then to go with from what we've seen for content.
So, so the social stuff, Gaggle's clearly on the fourteenth, district inputs, other district inputs by the twenty-eighth, is that...
Yeah, we could do that, yep.
What, what are we getting from those other districts? I mean, very tangible number, like, what plan are you using, that kinda stuff, but are we asking just like, what hurdles are you running into, or what...
Yeah, I think just in their, in their experience of implementing it, you know, and we're working through, yeah, like Kate said, just a series of questions we're asking them all, I think you're gonna find the model they're using, you know, there's not a big variance, right? I mean, we're seeing a lot of the same responses around the model, we have seen some conversations about how they've tried to localize it, right, to their community, which is helpful for us, knowing that, cause that's a big piece of what we've talked about. Um, but yeah, I think those are our next couple things, and I tried to adjust the timeline somewhat accordingly based on what we talked about that, so, I'll keep putting that in front of us, just to keep as kind of North Star of where we're going, um, but...
Are there any specific deadlines that we need to have in front of us to kind of work backwards from, I mean, I'm just thinking, I don't know, I'm just asking, if that's, if you do that with other things, like, if we're gonna change boundaries, we have to hit something by this...
Well, at some point, about hiring this coordinator and spending some of the funds, honestly, from the grant is gonna be a, a point for us to...
Is there a timeline in which we have to spend the money?
We're supposed to have this money.
I have to look at paperwork's in my office.
Yeah, I don't remember.
Is it a cop grant?
Having those...
If it's a cop grant, there's...
Yes.
So having those, those dates in here would be super helpful, so that we could work backwards, and I think that we're doing the work we need to be ready to do that?
Yep, we could put that in.
So, Janet, I was having quite a, quite a, there's a great deal of interest on the part of, uh, of what the crisis response model actually is, will actually be, and how much time they will have to look at it, and make...
Didn't they invite me out yet, Charlie?
What's that?
Were they gonna invite me out yet?
Uh, they could.
I've offered a few times to come out and talk, so, I think, I, I would say the one thing we'd wanna remind them is, you know, that is a group that we do have listed, and we intentionally wanna make sure we go out and talk to them through that, so, yeah.
I think their, their interest is, or their, what they want is a, is, is a written description of, of a model that they can see, uh, what, um, what response teams are going to respond to, what they're not gonna respond to, who's gonna be doing what in response to...
Yep.
So, I mean, I wonder, because we're clicking, we've got a model, we're getting feedback from other districts, um, in the January timeframe, I mean, I wonder if there's even just a preliminary conversation with them, and perhaps other groups to say, here's the path that we're taking, here's the process we're following, the timelines we're talking about, we're collecting, saying, we'll come back to you in February or late January with our, with our model, and there's more specific questions, but I'm just wondering if there's some kind of relationship building, networking earlier in the January timeframe, just to start saying, share this, kind of walk through the steps?
We could start engaging some of those groups in January, because I think, truth be told, the model, like I said, I mean, there's no, there's not gonna be a big change in the model, I mean, there's gonna be some things based on when we talk to those groups, wanna make sure we probably intentionally either incorporate or, uh, consider in that model, but, I mean, I think we could go out and start engaging them in that conversation, because I do think, I mean, I understand, I think I understand some of what their concerns are gonna be, right? I mean, the disproportionality aspect, that we're not doing that, I don't, you know, even with what, we started this conversation, this conversation around crisis response, we're probably disproportionate our data in a different direction, right? About who we're intervening in those situations, which students are involved, and so, I think that's where we need to try to, I guess, bridge that communication about what are the situations we're talking about that would end up in this, this kind of crisis response platform?
Timeline, I think, helps, right? Because there's places in there where it talks specifically about crafting those very specific pieces of, you know, what, what is a crisis, right? Like, what are, what is that definition in, you know?
But some of the ones we have longer standing relationships with, we could come out and start that conversation sooner, even if we have to go have it more than once, so, yeah.
Or members go to sessions too, and along with some admin team, and just start getting that input, we've heard it from community comment, but a little more formally gathering it, and then it'll drive some of our, what we pick out as protocols or processes or whatever for later review.
One of my concerns with that, though, is doing that without our crisis response coordinator, because that position seems so integral, and, I mean, if you look at the job description that's proposed, he or she is going to establish a crisis response team at each secondary school, so, if we spend all this time now getting feedback, and then we hire, that person's gonna have to go through that feedback position also, and is that the most efficient way?
Yeah, I mean, I just don't know if we wanna wait to hire, and then make this loss essential, cause we've been in the past.
Well, that's what I, I, I think if we can also move forward with hiring this position as soon as possible, so that we can bring that person into these community discussions...
Yeah, actually, because they need to build the relationships, and they need to hear the first two.
They do, and we've had this discussion before, and I, I do feel like it's a little bit of a chicken and egg kinda thing, right? Do you create your plan, and then find the right person to execute the plan, or do you find the right person and have them help you craft the plan? And I think you could probably go either way, and I think that's, we're kinda stuck in that, not really sure which way is the right way to go, right?
I envisioning the most important skill this person will have is being able to build relationships in this community with lots of different groups, and that's a tall order. And I don't know if that's done by anybody in the community, or if it could be, I don't know. I, I don't know if somebody coming out from outside could do that, but it's, I don't know of anybody who could.
And, and I agree, and that's my concern, is if we don't get this job posted, we're not gonna know who's applying for it, and we don't know if we have the right person, and so we're gonna spend the next three months getting ready to do it, then post the job, and realize, we can't hire for it. I mean, that's why to me, the critical component here is, is starting the job seeking process for the coordinator, because, I mean, I think about when I hire at my organization, I don't need you to be a specialist in A, I need you to show an ability to learn and adapt and grow and have new tasks, and so I don't think we have to find a specialist in the model that we choose, especially because I suspect that we'll make some localized inputs to it, and so we'd never find somebody who knows exactly what we're gonna run in this district. I think it's, I think we want someone who can build bridges and communicate well, and who has experience in crisis response models, plural, so that they can bring a diverse background into, into craftiness, and I think we know that all now, and so we can move forward with, with at least trying to post the job and getting that position filled, so that we don't find ourselves in a pickle in March.
And I, you know, and I don't know what folks think, but I'm envisioning once we post, we have applicants, I could see them going through, I mean, we're in a, I would imagine we're gonna have to meet the applicant, you know, that sort of a thing, cause again, to build trust, I think if we just do everything inside, and then we come up with this person, people are gonna be like, well, what, how did you decide that? And, and I, I just wanna end around all of those, you know, suspicions, you know, being as transparent as possible, and, and, and so, but I do think we just kinda have to be doing kind of both, and, and it's gonna be a little...
Well, so we could bring you something on the fourteenth, closer to a job description. Right now, you know, as Chase and I have talked to you guys about it a couple times, and Kate, you know, we've kinda framed in that roles and responsibilities, we could bring something closer to a job description. Honestly, for us, the capacity to continue moving this work forward, the sooner we have somebody in place, the quicker we'll get to our end goal, right? I mean...
So, I'm kinda, I think we need to do kind of parallel paths, I'm wondering why I don't wear these, cause they're...
It's getting late, Dan.
What's that?
It's getting late, falling apart.
Um, I feel like that we do need to do some outreach with these groups, even before we get a position posted, to say, here's the kinda skillset that we're looking at, we're gonna be posting it, what feedback do you have, so, again, to your point of super transparency, we're not, we're not, there's no surprises in this process, I think that's, we just need to be, my opinion, need to be very intentional, I think we do need to have some conversations with our stakeholder groups before we post the position, but, but start that process in January, so we don't delay getting the position posted for too long.
Well, even part of the engagement process, if, I think ideally to us, right, you saw this up on our timeline before, right, posting and hiring this position, so, if there's momentum to do that, I think the other thing we can, we continue to start to engage the community with is what that position's gonna do, right? I mean, that's a big part of the conversation, so...
Yeah, you're speaking on description, first of all, it'll result in that helping work.
Yeah, cause I still think there's misunderstanding that people think we're gonna hire a law enforcement officer to do this, and so if we can shut that down and say, this is what we're hiring, you know?
The fact of going out there, having that conversation...
Having a job description, a draft on it, and having these conversations, and again, full transparency in the process, we can go along the way, do it at board meetings, do's it's public, and...
And start moving forward.
Yeah.
So, yeah, parallel paths or chicken or egg, like you said, like, how do we keep them both moving? Cause I think Lisa's, you know, right, I mean, about being able to do that, yeah.
And, and, I mean, I'd love to be part of some of these visits with, with stakeholder groups, and, you know, start the conversation.
Well, I mean, I think one of the ways to keep moving forward, and guided this last one a little bit, is there, you just need to put together a, a hard and fast timeline, you know, and, I mean, the groups you can get to beforehand, if you publish it, you get to, but if you get to your deadline where you're gonna post, you're gonna have to go ahead and post, because as I said, we talked about, is once you get this first on a board, they probably need sixty, ninety, hundred, twenty days to get the program to where it launches, and if that's an August one launch, it's not...
We need to post by the end of January.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, yeah.
I mean, that seems...
Probably a little bit more, but yeah, not much after that.
So what if we try to, I mean, we can try to push the gas here the last two weeks before we go to break, and get some dates scheduled for January, to go out to some groups, we can share those, you know, with you via email, so, when we get them scheduled, if anybody wants to join, they're welcome to do that, I think...
One of the three, no mind.
I understand.
Yeah.
No public game.
Right.
Public game, I'm not saying.
Yeah. I think the...
No, I think you have to talk about stuff.
Oh, okay.
And we didn't talk to each other.
He was...
I already gave Janet and Sean a hard time about that.
And then Charlie left, and we were fine.
So, we could share those with you, the second thing is, we could bring a job description that looks a lot closer, so, I mean, essentially, as we're going out to talk to people, we kinda have that framework of what it is and what it's not, same thing around the whole model, right? What is it, what is it not? Um, and then the fourteenth, we'd have those presentations from those two groups, and then we can kinda determine from there what we wanna ne- next talk about on the twenty-eighth.
I think that's a good course, thanks, Nat.
Can I ask you kind of a, a side question? Um, I know someone mentioned, I was doing the bills, um, looked like, Bernie went to pick a, their assessment conference or something?
That's the one we're talking about that'll happen at the end of January.
Right, so what, what does that all entail? So like, what is it?
I, I would say that's where the learning that we've already shared with you has come from, right? And so, that's a conference where other districts from around the nation are using threat assessment, and they have models that are implemented, there's a variety of groups there that come and show, I mean, that's how we've learned about some of these pieces, and so...
So it's more cohesive...
Yeah, so...
Conference of what we're doing sorta ad hoc by calling up other districts.
Yeah, I mean, they put out a conference and people attend and share their schools' models, or take it back to your district about how they would implement it, so, Kate, anything I missed on content in the conference?
No, I think that covers that.
Okay, we have one, I'm moving on, we have one last topic, and we wanted to discuss an agenda item for the upcoming joint entities meeting.
And I, yeah, and before we start there, I'll just tell you, I had a, serendipity being what it is, um, we just had, uh, Jeff Frun and a couple of the members of his team in, um, and, and they, uh, came in to talk to us, uh, it was kind of a, a general topic, they said they wanted to talk about, uh, growth in the district, and, uh, potential, uh, collaboration with the city, um, as they look at their planning and zoning process to better understand where we might be looking at, at future schools, and how that might impact their decision about planning and zoning, um, and Charlie and I have actually had a couple follow-up conversations about his intentionality, I was able to bring it up with them, um, and they're planning a, a pretty aggressive, um, process to ensure that, um, future development is heterogeneous, not homogenous, and they've got, uh, a, some pretty aggressive zoning models that they're using, they were able to share that, I think those guys left already.
So, so, we just asked them to give an update, keep that meeting about the things that they're planning?
And I, I shared with Charlie, you know, that, uh, we tend not to put items on the agenda for other municipalities, but I said, they, we would be very, uh, open to them placing that as an agenda item on the joint entities meeting, I said before I actually formally asked them to do that, I would, I knew we were gonna talk about it on Tuesday night, and I said I'd talk to you first, and, and then I'd get back to them, but I, I think it would be good if he provided the kinda update that he did, let's see, Chase was there, Amy and Matt were there, Dwayne was there, am I missing anybody? Yeah, um, I think it'd be good for the joint entities group as a whole to hear that, especially after the, oh, dust-up we had at the last meeting?
When's the next meeting?
January four, thirteen?
Thirteen, okay, so, okay.
So...
I think that, to me, that works, that works fine, but the thing I was interested in is cities adopting zoning measures that resulted in more dense development with a wider range of...
And that's what he shared with us, and I did share, I think with all of you, and I, I resented it to Jeff too, the inclusionary zoning letter that, uh, we delivered to all the municipalities back in two thousand fourteen when we were pushing this really hard, um, so I shared that with him, and he was able to talk about how he saw their work now as being directly reflected there.
And I just wanna be clear, cities doing zoning to get more, fix, uh, more, more different housing types, and more dense development is not gonna increase our, our students in any way, because the market is not providing, uh, housing, whether it is rare, that's affordable to people with less than twenty thousand...
And he was pretty direct with us about that when we pushed him on affordable housing.
And just, aside note to that, don't forget, it's not just Iowa City we have to focus
And just a side note to that, don't forget, it's not just Iowa City we have to focus on.
Well, the joint entities will be a fine time to help you.
Who was at joint entities besides me last time?
I was there.
Okay, you remember? We had a little fireworks at the end when we talked about affordable housing, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it was a little tasty.
Fireworks got troubled.
Yeah. That in particular was a great end of the meeting, so it'll be a good opportunity to bring it up again.
So you'll take that back to Jeff?
I will take that back to Jeff, yes. I told him we were gonna meet about it tonight, and I'd give him a call tomorrow.
All right, awesome. All right, anything else?
I just, has a lot of interest and focus going for that, just so, for this...
I seem to want to go. I'd like to go.
You can have as many as you want there.
It's a public meeting.
Got it, it doesn't come out?